Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the zoning board of appeals meeting. I am a stand-in, so if there's any mistakes you can blame me. And anything I fail to do, please stand up and let me know. I'd like to start out by introducing everybody. We have Fred Keen, board member, Lomar Murad, Perry Tissack, John Matros. And we're waiting for Karen Stanislaus, who should be here relatively soon. She has a job in Syracuse and sometimes she can't get her quite as quick. Thank you, Perry.
She's pulling in right now.
Good. Our first case then will be...
Hold one second, she's coming in right now.
Our first case will be Maria and Daniel Blaze, 47 Arlington Terrace. So if Daniel can step forward, we'll hold for a minute until she gets here, but why don't you come on up?
So, I'm going to recuse myself from this. Thank you, thank you so much.
This is Lomar's daughter-in-law, so she is recusing herself and stepping away from the... Okay, Mrs. Blaze, Mr. Blaze, who would like to begin by telling us?
Why don't you read the applicant, so people know what the variance he's asking for?
This is the application of Mrs. Maria Blaze, 47 Arlington Terrace, Utica, New York, in the town of Hartford. Applicant is seeking a two-foot plus or minus left side yard setback area variance and a one-foot plus or minus rear yard setback area variance for the placement of a 10-foot by 8-foot shed. She lives in a low-density residential zone which requires a five-foot side yard setback and a five-foot rear yard setback for an accessory structure. Thus, there is a request for an area variance.
Mr. and Mrs. Blaze?
Thank you.
Tell us what you want to do.
Yeah, well, I first want to start off that we moved into the house about a year ago. We just started a family, I was actually a week pregnant, due, when we moved into the house, and then we had our son a week later. So when we bought the house, there was actually a shed already there when we bought the house that isn't dispute right now. There was a shed already there. When we purchased the home, we expected that the shed was going to actually remain there, being that we walked through the house, saw everything that was already there. As you know, I'm sure with a home that's older and that in the neighborhood that we're in right now, there's not a lot of space to have for storage. We have a one-and-a-half-stall garage, and both my husband and I have SUVs. So, we were very happy that there was a shed there when we were ready to purchase the home. We go through, we purchase the home and whatnot, and we do our final walkthrough after the closure, right before the closing. We were very surprised when we did the final walkthrough that the shed wasn't there. Very disappointed as well because we wanted that for the extra storage, being that we don't have a large garage, it's an older home, so there's not a lot of storage. So, we were very disappointed when we didn't see the shed there anymore. The owner had told us, the previous owner had told us that the shed was removed because it was old. That was the explanation that we gave, that we were given. To be honest, we didn't really agree with that. We were like, we did not think it was old, that should be left to us to decide whether the shed is old or not. We wanted that shed, very disappointed, but we didn't want that to be the downfall of us going into being able to buy the home, because we love the neighborhood, we want to be a Hartford resident. We were very happy to get a home in the neighborhood that we've always desired to live in, because we loved the old character of the homes and the stone and whatnot. So it was a neighborhood that we really wanted to be in. So we didn't want the shed issue to be the only reason why we didn't purchase the home, because we really loved everything else about it. So, my son was born, a year goes by, we're saving up for a shed as we assume that a lot of income comes when you have a child, and you just bought a bigger home than what you're used to having. So it took us a year to save up for the shed. So we saved up for the shed, we purchased it, and we actually got a shed that we believe is actually a little bit smaller than the shed that was already there, and we put the shed in the same exact spot that the previous shed was in. So we didn't put it anywhere differently, we put it in the same spot. And honestly, we didn't think that it was going to be an issue, because there was already a shed there, and it was actually a little bit smaller. My husband painted it to use very similar coloring to the house, make it coordinate with the neighborhood, make it coordinate with the home. So, then last weekend we were approached by our neighbor, Mrs. Galzo, and we were actually told that she, well, she told my husband that she actually paid to have the shed removed before we moved in there. So, we were, to be honest, I was actually extremely upset when I heard that, because not only did it cost us money to come here and present it for you, which we're gladly to do, being that we have to, but it cost money to do that, but it also cost us about $2,000 between the shed, paying for the shed to go out, to paint it and everything to make it look nice. So we were very surprised that Mrs. Galzo actually paid to have the shed removed, and then also was willing to pay half of the price to have it moved over just two feet. So I would like to explain to you, we're two feet too close, I got to her fence line, and only about a half a foot too close to the back line, and I have some pictures to show that, and I'll get to those. So, I would like to go into first the negatives of moving the shed from where it is right now. Where the shed is right now is, like I said, just two feet too close to her fence line, only a foot, a half a foot about, from the back fence line. To move the shed in any other area would actually cause more of a hazard and be more of an inconvenience. Where the shed is right now is actually the closest to where the driveway is and the closest to where the entrance is for us to get into where the garage is. If we were to move the shed on the opposite side, it would require us to have to actually walk across our entire backyard to put anything in there. And a lot of things that come from where we would be putting the shed would be, things that we would put in the shed would be things that, you know, we would use in the driveway, such as a snow blower. That would be something that we would consider putting in our shed. So that would require us in the winter to have to walk completely across our yard to put away, and that would be extremely cumbersome. Furthermore, like I said, there's good access from the garage where it is right now. We would have to walk across the yard. There's currently a swing set that's close to where the shed is too as well. So the swing set is actually pretty close already to where the shed is right now. We have one child, we want to have more, and we would like to maximize our backyard to be able to have our kids play in the backyard, not have any hazardous conditions with them playing back there. If the shed were to be moved over two feet to the right, it would be actually very close to the swing set. I actually think that if you were to open up the doors on the shed, because the shed right now has two doors, if you were to open it, it would actually come pretty close, if not make contact, with the swing set. Furthermore, if the kids are playing outside and the shed is actually moved over even more, it can cause a hazard, because kids are going to be bumping into the shed where they are and whatnot with playing where the swing set is. On the opposite side of our yard, of where the swing set is right now, there's actually electrical lines over there and electrical boxes, and I'll show you in those pictures. And the opposite side of the property actually inclines a little bit. So if you were to put the shed over there, it would actually create, or put the shed almost in the middle of our yard. It wouldn't be able to be close to where it is right now. It would be a lot closer into the middle of our yard because of the incline. And there's also currently tree stumps over there as well. So you'll see from the picture that it...
Can I just stop you just for a second? I think I'd like to have the chair say something before, because you're getting into a lot of detail. Because of the number that are here, and because we are missing a board member, you may want to explain the ruling.
Thank you, Perry. I was going to do that as soon as she stopped, but first I'd like to...
I didn't want her to get into a whole spiel that you changed her mind.
Introduce Karen Stanislaus. I had said she would be here, she is here now. Also, we have two board members, the town supervisor, Paul Michion, and councilman Dave Reynolds. We have in the audience too Joe Booth, our co-enforcement officer, and our attorney. You know, sometimes you drew a blank and I just...
I'm not blaming you anymore.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, there's only, we have one, two, three, four, there's five board members. You need four affirmative votes to pass. If you don't get the four, so any resolution, if you want to stay, you can do that. If you want to wait until we have a full board, which would only have one more person, which would have one more person.
Okay.
You can do that. In the event that we do make a motion tonight, either in favor or against, we'll make it without prejudice, so that if you decide you want to come back, you'd be able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Was I supposed to go into that big spiel before I...
I didn't watch it, then you have to withdraw, because you've got to get four out of five.
I see, okay, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Terry, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your help.
No, I appreciate that. All right, so you want me to continue?
Yes, thank you, I'm making notes.
Okay, thank you. So, as I was saying, the shed where it is right now actually creates no hardship to our neighbor. The trees actually cover the view. Moving it over one, two feet away actually will not change the view at all, and I have pictures to show that, it's just merely two feet. I actually have in the backyard, which you'll see in pictures, one of my neighbor's sheds, actually, my back neighbor's shed is very close to my backyard, which, you know, is inevitable. All these houses in this neighborhood are actually very close together. Their yards are not very big at all. I honestly didn't even think anything of it when I saw their shed closed. It's understandable that, you know, there's not a lot of backyard space and that in this type of neighborhood that may be viewing a shed in the backyard. And like I said, it would, to move it over would actually have to be pretty much in the middle of our, close to the middle of our yard, which actually, to me, I would think that that would actually create a change of the look of the neighborhood. If you were to drive by and see a shed kind of close to the middle of the backyard, it would seem strange to me.
I don't think anybody would see, if they drew a blank.
Well, the backyard too, but yeah, that is true. Anybody from the backyard area though would be able to see it. So there's no undesirable change that will be introduced in this. It's literally in the same spot as the last shed that was in there. And that shed, if we want to go based off of what the previous owner said, they said that they knocked the shed down because it was not old. Then we found out that it was actually our neighbors that paid to have it down, but if we want to go with that it was old, obviously it had been there a long time. So the shed had been there quite some time, and actually, the, looking at the shed when we bought the house, it did look like it had been there for quite some time, but we were certainly okay with the conditions. We even went in it when we bought the house and everything. So, that shed had been there for quite some time. So it really does not cause any undesirable change in the backyard. It's already cost so much money for us to replace, and it should have, shouldn't have done it, we shouldn't have had to even pay that, being that there was already a shed there. It's closest to the driveway and the gate, in the winter it's not practical to walk through the yard. There are no physical or environmental conditions that would be created by this shed being where it is. There's no substantial or adverse effect, being that it's only about, not even a half a foot from the back, and only two, we're talking just two feet from the side of Mrs. Galzo's property to where this being asked to move, just two feet. This was absolutely not self-created. It was supposed to be a part of the home that we bought. We were actually shocked and disappointed when it was gone, when we did our final walkthrough before the closing. We knew that we needed the extra storage, like I indicated. We only have a one-and-a-half-stall garage, two large vehicles. We were actually glad, like I indicated, that we were, we had the shed when we purchased the home, and then when it was gone, it actually created a hardship for us.
You got that.
So, I would like to just show you some of the photos too, so it would better help you understand. This picture is a little bit blurry, being that, I'm sorry, let it...
Who installed the new shed?
With that?
Who put it up?
She put it on.
And they didn't say they knew about it when you were there?
No, well, what happened was that they were putting up the shed, it was almost completely put up. My mother-in-law was home at the time, because we were both at work. She was watching my son, and she said that when they were done putting it up, that they told her that Mrs. Galzo came over, was very upset, asked them to completely stop working, to not put the shed up any further. They told her that if she had an issue, to come to us, that they were paid to do a job, and that they would do that job. They didn't think anything of putting the shed up, because it was, like, you could see where the previous shed was. Right, so they didn't say anything to us about that.
Was that done legally through the previous owner?
I'm not sure, to be honest, if it was done legally, but it had been there for quite some time.
No, no, the purchase of, or the actual, knocking it out.
Oh, you mean that taking the shed down?
Was that agreement done between the owner before they sold that to you, or after?
No, so we did our, we walked through the house, we understood what was a part of the property. Honestly, I thought that an outhouse was a part of the property, and I was extremely upset, had to look into the law in regards to that as well. And we didn't want a contract to break with that, and honestly, we were looking to get into the home, because I was a week due and whatnot, we didn't want that to be a holdout.
I have two questions, one for you, one for the attorney, if I may. Was that previous one on the slide?
On the slide?
Yeah.
Dan, was the previous one on the slide, or no? I can't remember.
It's on stone, it's on stone and a little black, yeah, when I went looking.
Yeah, I think, well, this is the previous shed, this isn't our shed. The previous shed actually has, you could tell it had two, and no, I wish this came out a little bit better, but this shed is actually a little bit bigger than the one that we put in.
But it wasn't put on the slide?
It just didn't have some signs that they had been something there when you got there?
When we, after it was taken down?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Like when you walked in and you saw that, you know, the shed was missing?
Right.
Did you see like a trace of where it had been?
Oh, completely, and that's where we told them to put the new one, because we assumed it wouldn't be a problem.
Well, I still have a question, let me just finish with my question then. Was the shed taken down illegally? Or unethically? Either or, I'd like to know.
Well, I'm the father and I'm also the attorney that represented her, so I'll talk on that.
Sure.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Anthony Murad. So, I'm here listening to all of this, and I hope it's not true that this really did happen, and I'm just, what my daughter is telling me. But when we are buying this piece of property, I was the lawyer, and we're thinking we're getting a shed. She's thinking we're getting a shed. She's nine months pregnant, and we closed on the second week, the first week of September. She has the baby a week later. So we go there, she does the walkthrough, the shed's not there. So I say to the real, the lawyer, go, where's the shed? And he said, well, it's not part of the contract. And I says, what's not part of the contract? The shed. I go, it's all part of the contract, it's on someone's property. You look at it, you put an offer in. He says that it was dilapidated and the owners threw it out. These people are going into this, being pregnant, and lo and behold, they buy the house. I say to them, we got a good deal, you don't want to blow it, buy the house. Now I'm told from her, this may not be true. It may be true that the neighbor, and I hope it's really not.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, I'm going...
And I don't know, I'm not here, Mrs. Galzo's here, and I don't know why they would say something different.
Let me just interrupt you, where I'm going with this direction, why they're here, is if this becomes a legal issue, it's a totally different thing that I think we should handle now, because if this does go to court, and I'm going to ask our town attorney if I may, is if this becomes a legal issue and we find out that the shed was torn down, could there be a ruling down the future that the person who tore it down, may it be illegally, have them restore the shed in the exact place?
Let me tell you something.
That may be a civil matter between the two property owners, Terry, but it has no effect...
No effect here.
Well, it has no effect on you, except to the fact Maria very, very properly said, this isn't a self-created hardship, because as you know, one of the criteria is, is it self-created? And what she's indicating to you, and I know that you know the process, the process is you put in an offer to buy a house. If it's accepted, you then have to contract to buy the house. Usually, there's some delay of a couple months, because you get a mortgage, you do a home inspection, whatever the case is, there's a delay of a couple months to close. Traditionally, the night before the closing, or the morning of the closing, you do a final walkthrough. And I think what Maria is saying is, when they made the contract and it was accepted, they bought the property with a shed. And what Mr. Murad is indicating, you know, is they contracted to buy that property as it appeared on a certain day when they put their offer in, and as it appeared on that day, there was a shed there.
True.
When they closed, a couple months down the road, the shed was gone. But regardless of that, they still closed. So the importance, they may have a civil lawsuit between them and somebody else who removed the shed if it was done improperly, but it doesn't affect your ability to determine whether or not a variance should be granted.
Thank you, and that was the answer I was looking for.
I'm sorry, I said it so many words.
No, that's all right, okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant from the board?
I would just like to show you some pictures. I'll go through them quickly to learn.
No, no, take your time.
Just so you have a better understanding. So this is where the shed, this is the previous shed that was taken down.
Right, that shed, that's the old shed.
Yeah, but I have that part.
So there's proof there was a shed there.
Right. This is now my side yard with the shed in there right now.
Maria, can we...
Yeah, we're all for you. I have them on our... This shows you just the amount of space that there is between our shed and Mrs. Galzo's front. And I have these all labeled, so you'll know what they were. So this is Mrs. Galzo's...
Is this fence on the property line?
This is, I believe it is. I'm not, we had a, we didn't have a survey done, so I'm not 100% sure, but I know, I don't believe this is our front.
I was going to say, who's front?
I believe it's Galzo's front, because they were down the other side as well.
But you're not sure if it's on the property line or set into the yard?
Yes, what, where you're at. I don't believe it, I don't know for certain, because we didn't have a survey done. But this does show the trees and the back view. If it were to be an eyesore, there's a couple trees there. This is the view from the shed towards Mrs. Galzo's property. So the shed is right here, as you can see, and I took this picture going towards the property. It also shows you how closely it is to the swing set, that if it were to be moved over anymore, you could see how close it would be to the swing set as well. This picture shows Mrs. Galzo's roof and the relation to the fence, and I took the picture just a little bit. This is actually her upstairs window, very hard to see, a lot of trees in the way.
That's a six-foot-high fence evidently.
With that?
Yes, that's a six-foot-high evidently.
Oh, yeah. This again just shows you that it's very hard to see where the house is from the shed. This is the entire backyard view, partly from the opposite side. This shows, this is the back part of the shed, so this shows that we would have to move the shed just a half a foot to be within the property line of the back part of the shed. This is, shows again just a different view of the shed, a relation to the swing, which it would be very close if we had moved it over.
Are you sure, whose fence is that, the white fence?
The white fence, I believe is Mrs. Galzo's, but I'm not 100% sure.
Normally it's reversed, the other side, not that I'm questioning it, I'm just looking at, we'll find out.
This is just another, it shows the trees. Okay. Yeah, they're, they're not, they're right next to each other. And you can look back about a picture of the, this shows you the garage, or going up our driveway, so you can, and this is me going like on my feet, or going like that. So when you're looking directly, you can barely see it, but that shows you the back line. This picture I think is important, but this is the picture that if we were to move it on the opposite side, it just shows you how the tree stumps are there, and that would cause the shed to be almost like in the center of our yard. You can even see, like, my husband was tucking grass, so you can't really tuck going up as much, because it's like a median line, and you could see that where the alternative, where we can actually...
No, that's the back of your lot, right?
Yeah.
Is that chain link fence you're, I can see that one, I think, yes.
And then, this just shows you a more, a view of where the shed is, just kind of a different point just to give you, like, how big that tree is. There's some pictures, I think they're pretty...
Oh, I think you've done a great job.
So those are all pretty good. Is there anything that you want to add, Dan?
I think you've covered it.
I do have to ask you a question. Are you in a military? You've been standing at ease there for a half hour.
Do we have any questions from the board for the applicant?
Do you want to add anything now?
Wait, 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 we'll get there. Thank you for helping, we'll get there.
I'm all set, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to open it up now for anyone who would like to speak for or against. Would anybody like to speak in favor or against the application?
Else, can I, while we're, unless she, unless we're rebuttal?
You can go first. Can I have the pictures though?
Yes, send them all down. Go ahead, Mr. Murad.
I thought neighbors had to be civil, and we have to reason with this now.
We are civil, go ahead.
Okay. There are some letters that we presented, and one is them from a neighbor next to Mrs. Galzo. And he is here today, Nick Whalen, his father and mother live next door. They are in support of that position. We submitted Mr. Longaretta, who is another attorney, lives on Windsor Terrace, and he will comment and support, I'm assuming, in favor of the variance. We submitted a letter from Ralph Givinosio, who is directly behind my daughter's house on Windsor Terrace, in support of that. We submitted a letter from a Brett Garia, or an email, who lives across the street. So those are in favor of that. You know, you've people been doing this for a long time, longer than I have, with regards to variances, but I think you have to, the first and foremost thing that we really need to do is whether or not the benefit to the applicant, if the variance grants, has weighed against the detriment to the health and safety and the welfare of the neighborhood or community. I mean, really, I mean, there's no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood if a de minimis two-foot fee is granted. Well, she's been through it all, would an undesirable change be produced? No, I think it makes it better. You got a brand-new shed, costs $2,000. Whether the benefit can be achieved by some other method. You hurt her, and you hurt Dan, and really couldn't. I mean, that's a shed, it's right off their driveway, they pull their car, they're going to put things in there. By putting a shed on the other piece of the property, it means you would have to go through their fence, walk over with a snow blower, and put it on the other end where there is wires there. And so I don't think that is beneficial, and I don't think they should be put in that position to do that in the first place. Whether the requested variance is substantial. You're talking two feet, you're not talking 30, 40, 50 feet. You're talking two to three feet. And whether it was, whether or not it will have any adverse effect or impact on a physical environment condition. I don't think this is a position where putting the shed's going to cost more running of the water, it's going to cost floods, anything along that nature, and if so, I'm sure there's going to have to be some expert here to say why. And the last, the last one is whether or not the alleged difficulty was self-created. In this particular case...
You're going through our, you're going through our criteria, but we'll do that after.
But I just want you to understand this whole thing here, okay? And I think, Dan, just make sure I'm correct if I'm wrong. Did you have a conversation with Mrs. Galzo a couple weeks ago about the shed? What, if anything, did she tell you?
That she paid to have it removed.
That she paid to have it moved. But I want to take that one step, because I think that's self-created. I'm not talking about a separate civil claim, which may or may not exist if somebody did that. But, we're now saying there was a shed there, it was there, whether or not it goes by adverse possession, and we know, or the next-door neighbor knows, that it's in violation of the code. the code. I'm assuming, because she's been there.
Well, it's grandfathered in because it's pretty old, but go ahead.
So it's there. So if there's a violation of the code, there will be nothing to prevent her or anybody else to go to the code's office and say, hey, it's a violation of the code. But we don't do that. We go through one owner, two owner, three owners, just three or four owners within a period of five years. Then afterwards, okay, unbeknown to us, we're told the shed is dilapidated. And again, I'm not gonna go through, I told them, don't lose the house, you're pregnant. Now we find out last week that it's removed, that somebody paid to get it removed. So now the self hardship wasn't created by them, it was created by somebody else. And you're going back, and if you know there was a code violation then, why not do something? Why not wait now, put a brand-new one and say, oh, by the way, it's code violation. It wasn't a code violation last year, last month, two years ago? So, you know, I don't understand how it affects the character of the, of the community, how it is, any adverse effect.
That's the, that's the.
I mean, you know, I'm just.
We appreciate what you're saying.
But I'm just saying, you know, hearing these two kids put money into something that they didn't know what to do.
I got you.
Okay?
Any questions on what I just said? Because we will go through exactly what you just said.
If we have a question, as many of ours here can answer it for us.
I could fire it up, this is, you know, because I don't think, I don't think we should give them something like this.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait.
And we're leaving. That's even worse. But Mr. Longaretta, he can.
Whoa, 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 I can.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dan. All right, all right. Now who else wanted to speak? Please raise your hand or step forward. It's in favor, okay.
I'm Mr. Longaretta. David Longaretta, how are you?
State your name and address, please.
David Longaretta, six Windsor Terrace, New York.
Smile, you're right.
As I said, I live on Windsor Terrace, and I am one street, actually, the backyard's actually bought out to where this particular property is. I walk the neighborhood almost daily, not every other day. Many, many houses there all have sheds in their backyards, positioned in different areas. This is the very first time, I've lived there for 16 years, the very first time I've heard anybody complain about a shed being placed in their own property. I think you guys hit the nail right on the head when you talked about grandfathering it in. The shed was there, I know that, because one of the former owners was a Joseph Telegrino. I was there, I saw the shed, and there was never a complaint from Mr. Telegrino in the house, and he was very short period of time, he then sold it, it was rented, it was leased, bought, and very happy to have it in our neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood, it's a quintessential heart of a neighborhood. It's essential for them to have it, because as you indicated, we're only talking, we saw them have garage. When you start getting push mowers, riding mowers, snow blowers, gasoline cans, and rock salt, shovels, brakes, you need the area to put them in, and this is my house, I'd put it in the shed, that's exactly what I'm doing. This does not change the character of the neighborhood at all. In fact, as we just mentioned, we have other letters.
We don't, I don't think you can see it, actually, from the room. Go ahead.
No, no, but if you walk around, you look, I think you've had it, I do apparently. Almost, almost all the houses in the neighborhood really do have sheds in there, in their backyards, at different, different distances from the side setbacks and the rear line stuff. But they're all there, so we all get along. It's a great neighborhood, so I really don't see anything I would certainly implore the board to pay very close attention to that and allow this, because again, as you said, it's grandfathered in. There was a site that the shed was on there before. However that shed came to be removed from there, we don't know all the true facts of that as of yet, we know what we heard today, but these people did not get the benefit of their bargain. They bought the house, they bought the real property with all the improvements on there. The shed is an improvement. They came to have that improvement. Through some other people doing whatever they may do or what they may not do, they denied these people the benefit of their bargain. They should be entitled to have this shed, and I'm asking the board to please approve this shed. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? In favor or against? Please state your name for the record and address.
Nicholas Whalen, 43, Arlington Terrace. W H A L E M. Here on behalf of my parents, Christopher and Gina Whalen, I have a letter from my father. Says, please accept this letter as a formal response to the public hearing notification regarding the variance request for Mrs. Maria Blaze at 47 Arlington Terrace. For the record, we have no objection to either setback reduction identified in this request. As a construction professional myself, I understand the desire to maintain boundary perimeter, but in certain situations, common sense needs prevail. This is especially the case in this situation, an older neighborhood with extremely close proximity to multiple boarding properties. It is our opinion that relief should be granted. It would be unfair to all of Mrs. Blaze's today's day and for a property configuration that was developed some ninety years ago. Thank you for allowing us to express our opinions on this matter. Sincerely, Christopher Whalen.
We have a copy of it. Yeah, we gotta have that. It's 40, well, it's, the Whalens live in, on the tree, so it's.
Why don't you give us a description of the house?
It's your three houses.
I am right next door to Mrs. Galzo's house.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone else like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak against? Mrs. Galzo, Ms. Galzo?
Why don't you tell the number?
Well, it's not the first time.
Okay. A lot of things were said here that are not true. Okay? So the only person that we're looking at is. Wrong option, there may be some, but I'm sure they all comply. This shed that was there previously do comply. The shed that they put up did not comply. They did not get a building permit in advance of putting it up. They put it up too close to both lines without a variance, and now they want everyone to say, okay, that's fine, two feet's no big deal. Two feet is half of the step back variance. It is a substantial, it's not a couple inches, it's two feet. The old shed did not, the foundation was not left with the old shed. There was nothing there for grass, so I don't know how they know where the old shed is. Whatever complaint they make out of the prior owner, that's between them and the prior owner. But my understanding that the contract for them is not entered into when the shed was built out. That is not any accurate allegation.
When you say my understanding, what do you base that on?
Because I saw the shed gone, and I, they didn't move in until the next day or year.
Yeah, but they signed the contract on the, on the property prior to.
I don't know, they gave it, when did you sign the contract?
We got an accepted offer in the middle of May, and we moved forward from there when we officially signed it.
Did a final walk-through, when was the final walk-through?
In July.
In July?
No.
No, the final walk-through.
I don't know when they have to do contract. I have no final understanding, just the time of day. There was no contract.
Where did you live, ma'am, in relation to, to their home? Right next door?
Yeah.
Okay, are you in the back or on the side?
On the side.
On the side, okay.
Can you see that fence?
The white fence, the white fence is yours.
Yes, it's mine.
That's yours.
There was one I had had on the top, it showed, yes, that one shows how close it is to the line, and how the swing set, they're saying that they can't do this because of the swing set. But there's, there's three reasons that they put in their application why they want this variance. First of all, you have to understand, they've already put the shed up. They're not asking for a variance prior to putting it up. They've already put it up. And they, and they've basically made clear the reason they want to have the variance is because they don't want to pay to move it back. By the way, I have no objection to the back line variance, or granted the back line variance. I'm only hearing if you got to the sideline, okay? And also they're telling you, well, moving all the way to the other side, but I talked to these people in advance to try to figure this out without having to have this. I tried to have a civil understanding between us. But I'm surprised at all the animosity here, but in any event, that's, that is it may. Moving it two feet will make a big difference to me, on my side. It will make a difference of being able to see it, it's an eyesore. There's a reason five feet is in the law. It's to, for homeowners or aesthetics, as well as for privacy. And so two feet, half that amount is a big deal, and it should be a requirement, um, by rights. It makes a big difference as to whether or not I can see it. It makes a big difference with regard to privacy. And also, there, this shed, you can see it's on, it's off the ground. It's on, it would be very easily moved, very easily moved. It's on cinder blocks. They can just move it two feet where it's too thin. Rodents are attracted, will live underneath the shed. There is a big nest of brown tops that live underneath the shed, that make their way onto my property. The farther away from the line it is, the more, less likely they're going to come onto my property. There is an environmental aspect to this. So I do want to drive backwards, they addressed some of that. Oh, the day that they put this up.
If you want to move forward, anybody who is interested, there's four seats right here, you can sit over there.
There's photographs, adoration ended up.
Yeah, so, anybody wish to move forward, please do.
The day that, the day that they put this up, I did go out there, and I talked to the people who were putting up, there were several men out there, and I said, no building permit, no we don't, it's too close to the line, we don't care. And they said, we're gonna go call the owners, they went and called the owners, they came back, they, we wasn't even on it yet. They said, we're still putting it up, and they moved as quickly as they could to put it up. This is self-created. They didn't get a building permit, they knew that it was in violation, and they still put it up. And it's not in the same location where the other one was. So there's no way you would have been able to tell there's grass there, there's no way that you would have been able to tell where the other shed had been.
So basically, it's your word against theirs, saying that it's not where we viewed this shed was. They're saying it is, you're saying it isn't, so there's no way to tell.
Well, the other one was in compliance. There was no, there was no variance, it was requested on the prior one, and there wasn't a need for variance.
How long was it there?
The other one? Just a couple years.
It was there two years. And you never, and you never complained about it for two years?
Actually, we did, and someone did come out and measured and said it was in compliance.
It wasn't compliant?
Yeah, someone, I think a close officer did come out and look at the other one, and said it was in compliance.
Can I just ask a question? What, did you?
No. Not yet.
Okay, there, there, application here lists three reasons why they want this shed variance. One is because of the swing set. I did speak with Mr. Blaze, he told me they're gonna take the swing set down. And you can tell by the pictures, it's old, it looks like you could get a lot of slivers, they have big, I don't think the swing set should be the determiner of what happens with the shed and whether there is a variance. The, plus, you can see through the pictures, that one on top specifically, it's about six feet away from the shed. There's no way that that swing, that shed, if it was moved two feet, would interfere with that swing set. The other thing that they said is, oh, by the way, their building permit also is inaccurate because the building permit shows the swing set right on top of the shed, and it's not. And so he said, it's, as I said, about six feet away. And the other, the second reason they said they wanted the variance was because they have a small yard. It's 83 by 130, it's a huge yard. And I have another picture here, too. They said they can't put it on the other side of the yard because there's wires there, whatever. They have, because they say it's dangerous, whatever, they have a swing set on the other side of the yard. So I'm not saying they have to move it to the other side of the yard, they were talking about that. I'm just saying that there, there are plenty of places on this yard where they can put it in compliance without having, needing a variance. They don't need a variance. They have lots of room on their yard with the swing set. Or to put the, the shed. And then the third reason they said, as I said, is they said it was in the exact location. They acknowledged the other shed's been down for over a year. I didn't see the pictures that went in when she was making comments. Is there a picture of the old shed here? Are they saying that it's showing the foundation was left there?
No.
A foundation, yeah, a foundation was not left there.
They didn't say that.
So I don't know what they know where it was.
Something like that, I don't think you're gonna end up, if you're looking for a cement foundation, I don't think you're gonna end up with something like that for a shed in the backyard.
Pardon me?
I don't think if you're looking for a cement foundation, to be under that, I don't think you're gonna find it. Because 99% of these sheds that are constructed are constructed just like that, and they come and they set them on blocks.
Right, right. So.
So what are you talking about by foundation?
I thought they said there were, there was, they were asking about whether a cement was.
Well, there was a question that was asked, but they didn't say that there was any cement.
Okay, well, I didn't, I wasn't involved in that, I didn't understand. And I couldn't hear them speaking, they were commenting about the. Okay, so again, the reasons they gave are true. The swing set's not in the way, the, it's not a small yard, it's a big lot, there's nothing else in the backyard. And it's not in the exact location it was previously. And they want to know that, if they gotten a building on it, but they didn't, because it's all their own name. Again, it's an eyesore, invade privacy, it's bad for owners. Okay, an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, and the development in our property will be created by granting the variance, but I just explained why. And because of those things, it's gonna decrease the value of my property, and when my property's value goes down, so will the value of all the other houses in the neighborhood. When I have to try to go sell my house, people are gonna see that shed right next to the line, and that's not gonna be unattractive at some point. The benefit sought to be achieved can be achieved by some other reasonable, reasonable method. They can move it. It's on those, as you said, it's on those cinder blocks. You can very easily achieve and move. And there's plenty of other areas where they can put it. And, you know, if they feel they need a shed, if all these people feel they need, you know, a big yard and a big shed, they shouldn't have bought this house. They should have bought, and if they're complaining, that, you know, the shed is gone, their complaint is with prior owner.
But there was a shed there when they bought the house.
They bought the house, and there was a shed there.
There was a shed there, so they thought like.
You buy your car, and you're gonna see no tires on it.
But that's not my problem, that's your problem with the prior owner.
This is a picture they submitted of where the old shed was.
I don't think you can tell from that where, where it was.
Well, you're right, but it was closer to the fence than it was.
We measured it, it was, we did the non-temperature, you know, with the neighborhood.
What was the measurement, when you measured?
At least five feet.
Okay.
Again, it's substantial, the requested variance is substantial, it's half the requested amount, or a hefty five-foot variance. It will make a difference to me, it will make a difference when I'm a property owner. And we'll live there for vast, adverse impact. The person is fine, the person will be moving, it will be moved by property. And it will decrease the value of properties in the neighborhood. And again, simply, the, the, their situation is totally self-created. If they had come to the town, they got us a building permit, they would have not encountered any of this. The reason they want this is they want the shed where they want it, but that's not what the rules are. The rules are it's supposed to be five feet away. And even if the other one was in violation, they don't have to register that violation, unless I'm mistaken on that.
Any question?
That's why they're here.
It was, been gone for over a year, the other one's been gone for over a year. It's not like they took the old one down and replaced this one right on top of it.
Well, they didn't take it down.
They did not do that.
If I understood right.
Is your, is the fence on your property line? Wait, on your property line, or is it? So you don't know if it's within two feet, or three feet, or one foot of the property line? All you know is that it's close to the fence. So the property had it surveyed prior to the removal of the shed. I do have a question, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Terry.
The question that I would have is, do you know who paid for that shed, or who removed the shed, and what caused it? And whose cause was it?
Uh, you know, first of all, I'm not going to give you that.
I think it is wrong.
No, it is.
Quiet!
That was the reason why I asked the attorney. I asked the attorney of that, if she came legal, and he replied, and you heard the reply. I'm going to have to stand by his statement.
I'm not sure.
Chris, I think it is very relevant, because it goes to the issue of self-created hardship. Uh, what I said is, there may be a right to a legal action civilly between, uh, Maria and whoever caused the removal of the shed, either the prior owner, whoever paid to have the shed removed. So what I said is, that's a separate legal issue, but I think that clearly, the issue of who removed the shed is material to their determination, because Maria's coming in saying, "I put in an offer, there was a shed. I contracted to buy the property with a shed, I closed the shed, it was gone through no fault of my own." So I think it is material.
The only comment I'm going to say on that, basically, is remove legally.
Well, I...
What, what, I saw it before, do I not?
Well, go ahead, Terry.
I'm sorry.
One of my concerns is, I hear you talking about value, and obviously, I am, board members here can tell you, I've been down here for many, many years, I'm always concerned about upkeep of the town and the concerns of people that are, such as you, are concerned about your value and all that. So I'm wondering, and this is what I'm trying to get through in my question. There's a reasoning why I'm asking that, did you remove the shed? And you certainly said it was done legally. Was it done during, or after they purchased the house?
They bought the house a year ago. They, they said that it wasn't there when, when they closed.
Well, I, I heard when they actually, let me make sure this is true. They asked, the question I, is there, when you went to look at the house, the shed was there?
When we went to look at the house, the shed was there. When we signed the contract, the shed was there. It was gone when we did our final walkthrough before we were about to move in.
Thank you very much.
We were told last week.
Well, that, that's your question, thank you.
I mean...
Okay, very good. Any other questions for, or against, and I don't want you to go over deep, so something new.
I, I don't, but I want to miss, I, I'd like, I mean, I, we, we heard a comp, against the self-creation, and I think the attorney is a hundred percent right, whether or not the self-creation was caused by them, or something else.
Right.
Okay, my question is, and we had a comment from, what, what my daughter said, that she was told by the neighbor that she paid to get it removed. Now, I don't understand why the neighbor can't comment on that, because if it's true, it's true, if it's not, it's not. So, can you comment on that?
Go ahead, sorry. I don't think it's wrong, it's not, I don't think it's wrong at all.
I mean, you know, and again, we're talking about rodents. Will there be rodents if there was another shed that was there? Uh, depreciation of the, of the, of the, uh, of the area, I mean, they spent two thousand dollars to appreciate it. There's no realtor coming here, there's no, anybody saying, "Well, by putting up the shed, the value goes down." Um, they're putting it in the exact same spot there was before, they didn't think they had building ver, variance, so that's why they didn't need it. But anytime, it's been done many, many times, where people put up, play, uh, not conforming, and they come in front of the board and ask that, they're, they make a decision retroactive. And that's what they're asking to do.
And the other thing about where the shed is located, the reason why we know where we put it is in the same spot the previous one was in, is there wasn't cement blocking or anything of that nature. It was just that you could see the outlining of the grass, and, um, there was no really grass area, and that's where we put the shed, and that's where the previous shed was, so... And the reason why we waited a year is because we didn't have two thousand dollars to just throw into a shed. Right when we bought the house, we had to save up a year to put towards the shed.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone else want to speak? All right, we have some letters in support, I think they were already mentioned, but I'll go through them quickly. One is from, uh, Mr. Whalen, in support.
Address.
Address is forty-three Arlington, thank you. The next one is from Gregory Maria, and I don't see his address on here.
I think it's, he says he owns the house across the street.
Across the street, it's across the street. The next one is Ralph Givinazio, ten Windsor Terrace. Please be advised, I have no objection if they're in favor of the young couple, this young couple being able to put out, add to shed down their property. The next one is from, oh, that's the Whalens again, David Longaretta, Seventh and Seven Arlington. He spoke here, he's in favor. And then Maureen Tellerico, please be advised that I have no objection with Maria Murell Blaze and Dana Blaze putting a shed on the property, it's, it's in favor.
What's your address?
And her address is...
Windsor. Windsor.
Windsor, okay. Eleven Windsor, yes, thank you. Okay, with that, uh, do we have any questions, or do you want to go through the criteria?
I think it went by two or three times already, but we got to go through it.
I guess you're telling me you want to go through the criteria. "An undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighbor, neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties."
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so.
Okay, Terry, did you answer?
I said no.
Would you have everybody, roll call everybody on the criteria, please?
Okay, state your name and what you want to do.
Fred Keem, uh, I, I feel it does not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, clear character of the neighborhood. Taras Tisak, no.
Karen Stanislaw.
John Matro says no.
Okay, Byron Elias says no. "The benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance."
Taras Tisak, questionable. I think it, uh...
Okay, just let me read you something that was said earlier, but I, I didn't quite understand it. But under Town Law two sixty-seven B, it says, it says that the zoning board to engage in a balancing test weighing the benefit to the applicant, which is a couple of feet, against the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community, if the area variance is granted. And that applicant need not show practical difficulties, which we say moving in two feet or two inches, in my mind, as that test was formally applied. So what they, what it's saying here is, we're weighing this particular one against the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community.
Karen Stanislaw says no.
Karen says no.
No, it's in the fence in the area.
It's in the fence there, it's my feeling, it's in the fence there, it's behind the six-foot fence, and a couple of feet, one way or another, it doesn't make any difference.
Did Terry say?
Yeah, I did, I said questionable, the reason why is that, is that name statement.
Okay.
But I said need a reason behind it. Fred Keem says no.
Fred Keem, no, 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 Terry's question, okay, next. " requested variance required, variance is substantial." Okay, so is it substantial? Behind the fence, in their backyard, is it substantial?
Terry Tisak, no.
Karen Stanislaw says no.
No.
Byron Elias, no. "A proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district."
Terry Tisak, no.
Karen Stanislaw, no.
Jen? Did you pick up, Jen?
John Matro says no. No, it's Fred Keem, no.
Okay, "Alleged difficulty was self-created."
Well, that's, that's, uh, again, we're getting into legal matters here, but what I heard from the attorney, no.
Karen Stanislaw, no.
John Matro says no.
Terry, or Fred?
Fred Keem says no.
Yeah, Byron Elias says no. Anybody want to make a motion?
John Matros would like to make a motion, that we grant the variance as requested.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Just kidding.
Karen second.
The motion by John, seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Fred, Terry, Byron?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Please move aside.
Uh, you will need to get a building permit if you don't already have one. So you need to see, uh, Joe Booth, and he'll give you the building permit. We want our money after the fact. Thank you.
The next application is the application of Mr. Steven J. Mullin, twelve Thornwood Road in Hartford. Mr. Mullin would like to add an accessory apartment to his residence. The existing home is non-conforming in that the house is only eight feet plus or minus from the sideline. The applicant is seeking a seven-foot plus or minus side yard area variance. Additionally, the applicant is adding an accessory apartment that exceeds the maximum size allowed for an accessory apartment by twenty-seven feet plus or minus. Mr. Mullin is also seeking a twenty-seven foot plus or minus area variance.
Mr. Mullin, please, if that was me who came yesterday, if your neighbors told you, it wasn't a burglar, it was me walking around the house and trying to... Mr. Mullin, please state your case.
Uh, Steve Mullin, I've lived at twelve Thornwood Road since December of twenty-eleven. Um, the reason why I'm looking to build this six-hundred-and-twenty-seven square foot apartment residence is for my dad, who's ninety, and my mom, who's eighty-three, who are getting older in their years. They currently live at twenty-nine Stan Holm Court, which is a two-level colonial. Getting older age, going up and down stairs, it's not too conducive for their health, their well-being. So I, we also do not want to go into an assisted living, uh, area. They're still in good health, they can get around. But I want to be able to give them the opportunity to live with my wife and I as they get older, and to be able to have help with family, or live out their life and have their good health and well-being.
Is this going to change the configuration of the house? You're building out and...
I'm actually building off the back...
Do you have complaints, pictures, etc.?
Yes, there are a few. This is Steve Goddard, my building.
Yeah, 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 it's in the picture, I want to put my name in.
I'm actually, uh, going to be coming off the backside of my garage, and attached to the side of my dining room, which is being re-interred, so...
Hold on, so we have one conversation here, I just want to make sure, I don't miss anything he's saying. Go ahead.
All the entryways will be a minimum of thirty-six inches to allow for, you know, if someone needs a walker, a wheelchair, uh, inside the dwelling, a large four-foot by four-foot stand-up shower that will have handles if they need to get around the shower, a toilet area.
Well, that's all internal.
Yes, yes.
We're concerned about the external.
The external essentially follows the same edge of where my garage ends currently.
It'll go straight back?
Straight back.
Twenty-five point six, uh, twenty-five feet six inches? Right down the same line as it's on?
Twenty-three foot back, twenty-five foot six, across the back.
Okay, okay, so you're going right down the same line as that your current house is on now? And, uh, the building is going to be constructed in the same materials as the existing house, so you won't be able to see the difference.
That is correct.
And that gets to equal six-hundred-and-so much, where is it?
Six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, actually, if you add up all the figures, it's six-hundred-and-thirteen-point-five.
Call it six-fourteen for the record.
So the house already is out of compliance, it's, it's, it's a non-conforming house. And you're not changing that in any way?
No.
Because it's still going to be non-conforming to the eight feet, or whatever it is right now. She's a law's advocate, or some law's advocate, or the...
No, one thing I do want to explain is...
Yeah, that's what I want to hear.
An accessory apartment is a permissible use. The only reason it's before you is because the existing home is too non-conforming, correct? Too close to the sidelines. Condition will fully conform in every respect, except that it'll be fourteen square feet now, the original twenty-seven, fourteen square feet, larger than the twenty-five percent allowed for the original structure. It can go up to twenty-five percent of the original structure in square foot.
And Terry, this is the same that we've had before, when you're expanding a non-conforming structure, then you have to give a variance.
And it's permissible use.
It's a permissible use, so use is not questioned.
No, there's no use, no use.
That was reasonable. Well, it's an area of safety. No, no, that's fine, I got the drawing, so... Well, I guess the obvious question that I would have is, is there another way that you can do it to be in compliance?
Well, I currently have the previous owner of the house put an addition off the back of the kitchen. Over on the other side, my house is a split level. So the whole finished basement on that side, it would be difficult to make it, to keep it. What I'm trying to do essentially is keep the floor plan all on one level. So as they came out of their living area, they can break walking into my, um, dining room, into my kitchen, into my living room. So I don't want to have to have them, have to have any steps either down or coming up.
And because it's non-conforming, they don't, you know, Terry, they have to be here anyway, right? I don't think there is a way to do it without being here.
That's why they're here, right?
Yeah, now I was going off when they said it's a, another...
Alternative way, yeah, I see.
No.
It's not a usual.
They could be adding a dining room on your house, and it would have to come here.
Anything, anything.
I guess the plea is because of the spot, right?
Because what?
The plea or the appeal that was asked.
No, 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 the plea is because he's only got eight-foot side yard on the green inside his house.
I understand that, but he's explaining the reason why.
Oh, okay.
Basically, it's an area of...
Okay, Terry.
A hardship type of... I guess that's...
Okay, any more questions to the applicant for what he wants to do? Is anyone in the audience here that would like to speak in favor or against? Come on, come on up, I want you to state your name, answer your address.
Uh, my name is Joshua Peck, I live at ninety Millen Road. Um, I'm not really for or against, I just have some concerns. Uh, I've lived at Ninety Millen Road for a year. Um, and a couple of discussion points are, when will construction begin in? As I have a toddler and one on the way, um, due in January. And then also, with the, the extra roof, how will the watershed affect? Because we have a creek. Uh, I live behind the applicant, and there's a creek behind us. So, you know, flooding is a concern with heavy rains. Um, another discussion point is, uh, since this is an accessory apartment, how will this affect, uh, them or a future homeowner from closing this off and turning this into some kind of rental property? Uh, when, you know, our neighborhood is not zoned for rental properties.
Not, well, there wouldn't be rental...
They would have to come in as for permission to do that.
We can't have a separate entrance for it.
Yeah, currently, the only way in would be through an entryway off my dining room.
So has, the entrance has to be from within the home?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Um, and then the, how much extra water would be put into, under the yard and the creek?
This would be following the same roofline as my main house. So what gutters put on it's, I'm about probably, from where my house ends, a good hundred and some feet from that creek.
Okay, and then timeline on construction, if it is...
Timeline as far as, when it would start?
And when it would finish.
Hopefully, uh, within a month, and then probably by the end of December.
Okay.
And obviously, wouldn't go on at night, and you know, anything like that.
Yeah, but kids have toddlers, they have to sleep when they want.
Yeah, that's what we learned from that.
Those are the concerns I...
That's a great question, I like the interest question, I really do, because that could be a problem down there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Plus, I've, I've lived there for sixteen years on the next door.
Whoa, whoa, come on up in front, and then give us your name and address, please.
Sure, uh, John Treela, T-R-E-L-A, and I live at fourteen Thornwood. So I am the closest neighbor right next door, which the addition will be closest to my house.
Okay, you're on the left-hand side?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I've lived there for sixteen years, and the creek has never flooded.
Yeah.
The only one in town.
Just for the flow of water, usually, like, right now, there's, there's probably no more than a trickle. But I am in support, um, uh, the Mullins are my next-door neighbors. Um, they've been my next-door neighbors for a number of years. They are a model neighbor, they are a very nice family. They have done everything that they can to improve the property, to add value, not only to their home, but to other homes around it, including my own. Um, they're, they're great people. So I admire him for what he's trying to do, for bringing his father, instead of, you know, putting his father in another place to bring him in. Um, I have a little son myself, who's, uh, of our own, who's two years old, along with a couple teenagers. Um, I, I've got nothing but good things to say, uh, in terms of where the, the addition is, is going. We have a fence up there now currently, um, and I do not think it will be a detriment anyway. So I, it has my full support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other in favor or against? Board, do you want to go through the criteria?
No, we haven't.
Are you ready, or you, you have any more questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, criteria. "An undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood if he puts this addition on the back of his house."
No.
Say your name. Terry?
Uh, no, Terry.
John? No, Fred?
Fred Keem, no.
Okay. Okay. Lenora, no, thank you. Byron, no. I want to do it for this because this way we don't-
We don't have Dory.
We don't have anybody. We got me, I'll be lucky to read it tomorrow. The benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue.
No.
John, no. Terry?
Terry, no.
I'm questionable on that.
Questionable for Terry?
Fred Kane, no.
No. Lenora? Byron, no. The requested variance is substantial. I don't personally think so for putting that in this thing for his father to live in. Byron, Byron, no.
It's only six hundred square feet, six hundred change.
Fred, no. Lenora?
Nope.
No, John?
No, Terry.
No, Terry.
Okay. The proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact of a physical environment conditions in neighborhood. Byron, no.
John, no.
Terry, no.
Terry?
No. Fred, no.
Okay, all no's. And finally, last but not least, alleged difficulty was self-created. Yes, when his father had him. But I'm going to say no for this because, you know, you can't know when you buy a house and try to put an addition in. I got legal stuff, we basically got into it in the other case. I got law that says that, so.
And you don't know what anybody's going to do in twenty years.
And you don't know what anybody's going to be doing tomorrow, much less twenty years.
I agree with you.
Okay, so no for Matros.
No for Karen.
No for Karen. Mr. T.
No.
No for Mr. T.
No.
No.
Me, no.
Can I ask a question to the attorney or you?
Attorney, attorney.
My only concern that I have, I think this is a wonderful idea and I think it's a wonderful plot, maybe we should do more of this.
I want to move it.
Not as far as building, but just personal reasons, I think this is a wonderful thing to do. But I'd like to make sure that we kind of protect ourselves, and I'm not sure if we should put something as an additive to a motion, whoever makes the motion, that there will not be another entrance placed unless it goes and it has to get a building permit, because I don't want it to become a two-family home.
I would argue, or wait, no, no, I want to argue against it, but go ahead. Let me let you finish first.
And I'd like to keep it the way the applicant, the applicant has it right now, but if there happens to be any additional building, may it be the present owner or if it goes up for sale, I would like to be known that that variance was granted with only one doorway.
I would argue against it for my esteemed colleague who's been on the board much longer, many more years than I have. But in the back of my house, I have three sliding glass doors, three six-foot sliding glass doors. I would like to see, whether they want to do it, I would like to see that back entrance not as a way to rent, because that would be in violation of the zoning areas.
I understand, that's why I asked.
But in case there was a fire or something, if they were to put a door back there, it wouldn't bother me a bit. Now, if you're going to turn it into a rental, and I see it advertised in the paper next week, then I have a different feeling. But for that reason, I would say many houses have multiple doors across the back, including mine. I got, I got five doors in my house to get out.
Now, let me ask the question, if they were not putting anybody there?
Yeah.
If it's presently without a back door, wouldn't that be kind of a hazard right now that you're talking about?
Well, if nobody lived, in other words, if it was like-
Because they're adding more people, is that the reason why you want a door?
No, 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 I want the door because, yes, I want the door because if you have somebody sleeping back there and there is a problem, if they do put a, a door, whether it's a sliding glass door or otherwise, I would, I personally would not have a problem with it, but for that reason.
That's just a question, though. Do you have anything on that?
I agree with what Byron said.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay. I, so, but either way, does somebody want to make a motion?
We'll all move, we accept the application as, as proposed.
We got a motion by Fred to accept. Give her a second.
As built as planned.
As built as planned.
I'll second.
To accept, seconded by Lenora. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
As built as planned, yes.
I'll add that. As built as planned, aye. You're all in favor, see Mr. Booth for whatever he needs and he'll get you the last reformer money, so go with the chapter. Okay, to the next.
Thank you very much.
The application of First Source Federal Credit Union, four-five-one, commercial drive in Hartford, New York. The applicant is seeking four variances. One, to increase parking spaces from the required ten feet by eighteen to nine feet by eighteen. Two, a variance to exceed the maximum one hundred and twenty percent of required parking spaces to one hundred and sixty percent. Three, a ten-foot plus or minus left-side area variance to extend parking next to and on to the owner's neighboring property. And four, a five-foot plus or minus area variance to place a driveway on and across to owner's adjacent property.
Okay, I want to take a couple of minute break because Terry has just stepped out of the room. But for the record, I sit on the, on a committee at First Source Federal Credit Union, so I will abstain from voting. I'll be glad to stay if you'd like me to hit the gavel and read the, read the, I'll be glad to do that, or if you'd like, I'll go sit in the back.
Stand right where you are.
Okay, then I will continue with the meeting, but I won't be voting nor will I speak in favor or against. And if we could just have a couple of minutes. Still working. Okay. Nice job, Brian. You did a very nice job. Hey, Kathy, do you want to move your camera around this way because he's going to set up the, so you can see that? Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, not just stay here and just get the conversation.
Yeah, I hear my laser, I just have to get out of here.
Yes, you do. You're ready. Listen, we had Mr. Whalen here, you know, who spoke in favor of the board. Do you know that the, one of the chief justices in the fifth, or the fourth, the fourth president is, is well at Whalen?
That's related to them?
Oh, I don't know, but you had a chief justice, she should be-
I had the chief chief justice. There she is.
You had the justice here, I get it.
How many residents do you have? Except you know, you didn't have any. She wasn't here.
You know my problem? I didn't want to do it. But I, I, I want to, just, I don't want to be, I want to be where you're going. I want to be in that.
Greg.
My leadership is interesting. So that's how it works?
Yeah.
Okay. Here we go. Where's the gavel? The gavel's back in session.
Nature calls. I think I'd be important to the board.
All right, First Source Federal Credit Union, step up. Come on in.
Good evening, Greg Skorn, Gunningskorn Engineers representing First Source. And if you'd like, I'll go through kind of what we're planning on doing and the reasons we're seeking these variances.
Everybody's seen your property here, so if you could-
I think everybody knew Hartford Drive through every day.
Just give us a quick overview of what you want to do and then tell us questions.
Right now, they have a, they have a, an acute shortage of parking. Even though it, the parking on-site meets the code between the service end of the bank business on the first floor and the office on the second floor, there's a, there's a shortage of parking spaces. And what they're looking to do is add twenty additional spaces, shade it in there, it would connect their, both their properties. For the record, they own both parcels that are part of the variance.
And so everybody knows about a year ago, we changed the size of parking spaces. The town board passed a resolution requiring parking spaces to be ten feet by eighteen rather than nine feet by eighteen.
And what are, what are the present ones?
On-site, they're presently nine by eighteen.
That's the old standard.
Which is the old standard. We're looking to utilize the same parking space size. From, from an engineering standpoint, the ten by eighteen, typically, we don't do anything like that unless it's a grocery store type situation where there are carts, where there's a lot of things that go between cars. Nine by eighteen works very well as long as you have a, an adequate drive aisle which all these have. So it, the difficulty is not so much doors opening in a situation like this, where there's no shopping carts, the cars be able to maneuver in and out, especially some are longer vehicles. So we're hoping to keep the same nine by eighteen. It's a lot more economical as far as the environment goes. There's less of an impact on the environment, less of coverage on the lot, so it kind of takes that other variance off the picture a little bit. So that, that's why we're looking for a nine by eighteen kind of a standard. The, there's two different kinds of parking demand on the site. The initial, the more transient is in this area here, which is related to the bank front and customers, people coming in for service, that sort of thing. The remainder of the site is employee parking. Traditionally, they come in in the morning, they leave in the evening, and I can't say I think we're a little movement through there. As I said previously, they do own both parcels, so we're looking at connecting it to driveway here, driveway here. One of the reasons that the parking is configured is and approaches slightly on that one line is to align the two drive aisles, so that that's for safety reasons. And also, I want to bring it further up here because then it would steepen the scope of the driveway, the down, the guarantee.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do. Go ahead, Fred. Is there, is there lights up here now? What's here now?
Uh, that is primarily grass area.
Okay, so that's, that's how it's got to be.
Yes.
And this is the area that you're going to have parking spaces? And they're basically for the employee parking?
Absolutely, yes.
Terry? I have several questions, if I may. We all know that First Source is growing. You bought the adjacent building, which is the building up above, the house that was there. Is any of that parking going to be used for that building up above?
Potentially, it could be used for both.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Steve Seawell, facilities manager for First Source.
Okay. With that said, are there any, my second question would be is, because of the amount of cars are in there, and I drive by there every single day, is there anything else that you are renting out in that building, or is it all for First Source?
It's all employees, First Source employees.
Okay, very good. Now, the other thing I'd like to do is compliment you, I think I should compliment you, is because as you make that turn coming into First Source, as you're making a right, there's a part there, or a little, I call it a park, maybe it should be a park, a nice little seating area there.
Yep.
And I'm not sure if you folks are maintaining that, or the town has been maintaining that, but they did a wonderful job there.
We maintain everything from, from the credit union down to Senate.
Do you own it, though?
No, we don't own it.
Okay.
The state owns it.
The state owns, that kind of-
But we take care of it.
Yeah, okay. At this time, that's all I've got. But thank you for taking care of that.
Yep.
Now, if you can take care of the medium and the roadside there, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I flipped around just to give you a little better perspective here, which helps quite a bit.
Yeah, that's better right there.
Maybe you can use your pointer and show everybody where the area in question is now.
This is the parking area here. Currently, this is all grass.
Right.
There's going to be a couple parking spaces taken out here to accommodate-
A drive.
-the intersection between the two sites.
Between the house and the-
And the credit union, yeah. Primarily, I just, I personally don't like a lot of little dead ends like this. It's one of those things where people get in there, they get to the end, they can't find a parking spot, and then they've got to back up.
Can you, just another question, I certainly don't want to build roads for you, but as we travel that road every single day, and as you come around the corner off of Seneca and you're going to make an immediate left, you have that medium there, and what happens either if you're coming in from the, let's call it the east, going west, whatever side, could you not make an entrance at that point where the entrance would be up further in the road? You follow me? As you're going towards the American Legion?
So-
That'll give you a little bit more space because you got that mobile home park there.
Right.
And I've been there numerous times where people stop at that mobile home park, where they go into the new Paxton Hospital there, and it becomes a little clutter area there. And I'm thinking if you move that down a little bit, would that not help you park there also?
Talking about this, the old driveway here, that's-
That's correct. Yeah, that's right there, yeah. That's the old Nichols, that's the cemetery.
That's the old Nichols across the road.
Right, that's the old mobile home, because right in there, it becomes a bottleneck now. And the reason why is you get the Paxton Hospital there, or whatever they call themselves now. You've got beer here up there, you've got many retail establishments, and there's many more traffic. And that's the only really entrance out of there, unless you go up to the other way, but then you can't make a left turn or a turn.
Terry, that probably was shown on their approved site plan, so that if they wanted to move that, they'd have to go back to the planning board and seek to amend their site plan. And the planning board probably approved it at that location for specific reasons. I don't know if traffic studies were done or whatever.
Just the personal concern.
Okay, because this board can't have remove the driveway.
Yeah, we're here for the parking lot, I understand that, but I, I'm also concerned about traffic flow up there.
Well, and we, we have looked at traffic flow because, because a site is a very busy site, so we-
It is a busy site.
...that my biggest bank's ever seen in my life.
Yeah, I like to compliment you on that.
We have a lot of cut-through traffic now that comes through this other driveway here and they come across here all the time.
Yeah, because the traffic backs up.
Right.
God forbid if there's an emergency vehicle coming down that road. Go down, go down the road in November, you can't get by there.
So is there going to be another way into the new area?
There-
A new entrance? Or are you-
No.
So you're probably going to get more cut-through.
Uh, this is not an appealing cut-through. This one here is. And it, and it is because it's, it's a straight shot down like this. This one here is not even an appealing cut-through compared to how this one here is.
And you're confident just moving, removing a few of the parking spaces people are used to parking there, that they'll know that it's now-
Yeah, we're going to stripe it. We're going to actually stripe it before you do.
I didn't mean to get off the subject, but I just wanted to talk about that.
And it's employees, which makes it, I mean, if it was a general public, we'd have a long learning curve.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
What would be the bad thing if I'm going to tend to be the nine feet closer together? I mean, I mean, as far as any hindrance to any safety or anything like that, I don't-
Well, we got codes, I'm not going to respond, but it was codes officer, we're an engineer in there.
No, they're ten. They used to be nine. The town board expanded the definition of a parking space to be ten feet.
But did everyone who had parking spaces have to change that?
No.
No, so right now, they're-
They're all unconformant. But because now they want to put more in, required to be ten.
Have to be nine.
They're saying, we want to do them based on the old nine feet.
Well, why did the town board change it? What was the reasoning behind it?
Good question.
Well, Joe, we decided, what was the basis?
Oh, yeah, honestly, one member did not like what happened with the Texas Roadhouse, uh, core site.
I guess, question that you may have asked that when I stepped away, if it was ten foot, and now you're going to put in, would you say twenty?
No.
No, the nine, it was ten, it was, they were ten foot wide.
Right.
We're going to go nine foot wide, same depth. And typically, we'll, we'll do nine by eighteen, twenty-four foot aisles. We've gone down to eight and a half by eighteen.
If you went to ten by eighteen, how many would you lose?
By two.
Two cars?
Two cars at least.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone in the audience for or against?
I just, um, name is Steve Sonny, I'm his neighbor.
Hi, Steve.
Love these guys, just want to say I'm okay with it. I'm closing first and two of him. We're trying to get them to buy us, my wife would love it, but, uh, it came from the terms on a number. I still got a long ways to go before I'm, I'm independent, but anyways, I'm okay with it.
Usually, when somebody wants the people to buy it, and they don't buy it, they're come here and they're against it. That's more common of what happens at this.
Where's your property?
Well, my property is this building right here. So, I have a dream, but I won't get into that today. He knows it, I'd love to talk to the town about it. I want to make the town more famous, but that's, that's another story.
All right, let's see who we got.
My kind of neighbor.
No longer have too many, I'm doing that.
No, not anymore.
All right, I have another question.
Yes, yeah, please ask.
I hate to ask this, and I know it's been late here, but as we all know, we're putting the new town facility just up the road from there. And, basically, by not only that, we're also putting the police department up there, emergency vehicles up there. I'm just wondering, are we adding to the road traffic up there? Because that's only a two-lane, uh, not even a highway, a two-lane road up there. As I said, if you go up to late October, early November, they're backed up from the traffic light up Zeb's all the way up to the American Legion there, trying to get to Consumer Square. And now we're adding a little more, we're putting all the town employees up there, and now we're adding here. And I'm only concerned about traffic, that's why I'm asking this question.
So how many spaces are we at?
Twenty.
Twenty.
So twenty, that's mainly employees?
I can address that one. By adding these spots, what, what we're doing right now is we're taking up a lot of our member parking here with our employees because we don't have enough parking. So now, we, you know, we're creating more of a head, it's actually not having them spots, because then we've got traffic sitting around rather than being in a spot because we have employees taking up them spots.
Employees are designated.
They're already there.
Are, are they a designated area or an employee department place?
Well, the problem is, we've employed more people, so now, we used to have these left over here for our employees. Now we take up all this with our employees, and some of these spots here, because we've added, grown, where we've added more employees.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why, that's why we're trying to get to this, so we don't affect our member parking.
Probably be less congested, because all the employees will be in one area.
Right.
Yeah, it's one of those things where it just reaches a saturation point at one, at some point, and you've got people driving around trying to find parking spaces, and that sort of thing. So it's not necessarily that, you know, I mean, they're not going to say, how about they're hiring, but they're now, they're hiring more people. But the road driving force is really, really behind the fact that during peak times, their customer service areas are blocked up by employee parking.
One more question. Is there any property that's adjacent to that that you can purchase that you would not need this particular application in front of us here tonight?
DOT laughed at us about that.
You'd be the only one. You did look at that?
I think we tried three, four different people trying to get a little crack opening in the door.
We, we tried that, and we actually tried, we thought about farm hall, or the Plaza Cross Road, but then that causes a hazard of employees crossing the road and everything else. So really, we got no, we have no space stuff, my.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sorry to ask so many questions, I just wanted to make sure, I'm very familiar with that.
They were good questions.
Okay, any other questions from the board, the applicant? Want to go through the criteria?
Do you want to ask the audience, or do you want to?
I think I did, but okay. All right, anybody in the audience, just to make sure? Okay, hearing none. An undesirable change will be produced to the character of the neighborhood, or to the detriment of the nearby properties, if we're free.
No.
No, Terry?
No.
No, Laura? Okay, oh, no.
Karen, no.
Karen, no, yeah, I agree with you. Benefits sought by the applicant but achieved by some other method feasible. Karen, no, Fred, no?
No, no.
Terry, no?
My question.
The requested variance is substantial.
Maybe.
Maybe from Karen.
Questionable for me.
Questionable from Terry. Chad?
I'm going to say no, not all the land there. No.
No, no, okay. The proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact of the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood of district.
No.
No, Karen, no. Terry?
We're adding more blacktop. Questionable.
Questionable for Terry.
No.
No for Fred.
I would say questionable.
Questionable for Laura, okay. Let's see, alleged difficulty was self-created, yes, they got more business. They grew.
They're spending more money here than the town.
I said that as a joke, but go ahead. Go ahead. Chad?
Yep, yes.
Karen, no.
No, Karen, Terry?
What's the?
Wait, yeah.
What, what, what are you asking?
Self-created.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is, yes.
I don't really think so.
Yeah, good, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion for or against?
I'll make a motion that exists under the application.
Motion. It's submitted, okay. Seconded by Fred.
Aye.
Manora, aye. Fred, uh, Terry?
Aye.
Aye, Karen, yes, you did it, yes. Fred, did I get you?
Yes.
I seconded. Aye.
You seconded, okay, all in favor, I abstain. Application, Terry, see Joe with whatever you need to do, and he will help you.
I hear you. Thank you, thank you.
All right, next applicant.
The application of Mr. Paul Michioni, 1701 Sherman Drive, New York, Town in Hartford.
Walk out the back.
Mr. Michioni would like to erect a six-foot residential fence to be placed eight feet plus or minus forward of the home facing Pleasant Street. Therefore, the applicant is seeking an eight-foot plus or minus area.
Yes, Paul, you want to come up?
Sure.
You want to explain what you're doing or trying to do?
Sure, um, I, I redid a house at 1701 Sherman Drive, on the corner of Pleasant and Sherman. The house, Kurt and Bo, used to have a fence. It was a steel metal fence, and they're all the way around the house. I took the side locked fence off, um, when we did, uh, work it back, and then once I took it off, now I'm back to put it back up. So the neighbors I talked to, Mrs. Bishop next door, um, Mr. Don you didn't have any complaints, he's on the side of me. They both love what, you know, patented over there, that we redid the house because it's been a nice sort for many years, so. Anyway, uh, she recommended I put a vinyl fence on that side. She thought it would be nicer for the property and the view that's there, so, um, I'm here tonight to do that. If you'd like, I could demonstrate on the board, show you exactly.
Yeah, sure.
So I would, I would say my house is, is here. Uh, this would be the Sherman Drive, uh, area, this would be Pleasant. Uh, currently, there's a, there's a fence that currently goes in the back like this.
Is that a chain link fence?
It's a chain link in the back, up. There's a stone barricade wall that comes here, that has stairs, that goes up to my neighbors. Uh, Mr. Don you's over here, the bishops are behind you actually. Um, there was a chain link fence before that went out, past the house, came down. There was a gate, there was a gate right here, and then there's a chain link fence that went to the house. Right here is the hill. Thank you, it's okay. I don't know if you guys, um, seen it, but as you know, there's a big embankment here, um, on the side of the house, which, you know, causes a hazard for kids, or, you know, anyone that's, that's going to be here doing anything in the backyard. Um, also too, as you know, your backyard, your view is the street, so this would, this would actually just give some closure to the area. There'll be a white, a nice fence, uh, gate right here that you can enter through, uh, the backyard. And I won't be touching this because there's a line of trees on the back, and my neighbors here requested that. I, I leave this the way it was, uh, for now, because they had their trees up and they liked the privacy, because my kitchen window that's here, um, actually overlooks their kitchen window that's on that side. So it kind of gives a little buffer, um, but right here, there's no buffer at all. So, um, this actually, the holes are still there from the fence. Uh, I'm just, I'm just asking for permission, I guess, to put back what was there, but with a white vinyl instead of a, uh,
Chain link?
Chain link fence that was. Uh, no, it's, it's going to have, it's going to have little, little indentures on the, on the actual fence. Uh, and there'll be a little gate here, um, just like before, again, just.
So you're not talking on Sherman?
No, 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 nothing, nothing here. Again, it's, it's just the fence on the Pleasant, because you know I got, I got, again, the embankment, and then I got a street. So if somebody has kids or anything like that, you know, it's, it's right off the embankment, right into the road.
How far is the eight feet? Where is the eight feet, Paul?
The eight feet is, is so from the corner of the house, again, the gate that was there, so the eight, the eight feet would be here.
Okay, all right, so the eight feet, I'll, I'll say here. And then, um, how many feet up from the road do you think that is?
From, from this corner?
Edge of pavement. Yeah, from that corner.
To here or to the center of the, the right away?
Not center, no, no, not center, but just the edge of pavement. From there, from that corner to edge of pavement.
There's all, there's like all fifteen feet there plus.
So you're still?
What about the elevation between?
Well, I'm saying from the embankment, oh, don't forget, the embankment is big, it's probably wider than, well, probably about the size of this room going straight down the road, yes.
Well, what about the elevation between the backyard and the road, what's the difference? Is that what we're discussing?
Well, if, if you're driving down the street, you're going to see probably the top of the fence, I would say. I mean, Joe, you got a better?
Well, you're drawing it on the scale, you're showing it, it's too close to the road, there's quite a distance.
Oh, from here, you're saying?
From the edge of the road, or from the property line, I think, uh, the connection you showed me was almost thirty feet, quarter back feet.
But that includes the, the goalie?
Oh, maybe you were going to the middle of the road.
Oh, no, no, oh, no, then it's like fifty-five feet to the middle of the road, you don't know, it's huge for that.
This is the property, right here. And you can see, this is the start of the embankment, and it's only coming eight feet from the back corner, which is, you know.
Did you see my rock garden? You guys went up there? Did you guys? Okay, so where the rock garden is, it's, it's three feet off the rock garden, so it's, again, it's, it's off, because my rock garden comes out five foot here. There's, there's, there's five feet here with the rocks, and I'm coming three feet actually after the rocks, so I can put my gate right there. And in fact, if, the holes are still there where the old gate was, and in fact, it's off the gate, because my gate still comes all the way out to here. So I'm just going to connect to that corner and come over, so that's already, that's still there. I'm not going to change any of that.
And you're going to butt it up against the chain link fence?
Yeah, I'm going to butt this side to the chain link fence right here, so it's going to come in to this corner, and then come down, down through, and then connect into the corner of my house where the, the white, uh, corner pieces, that's white from siding, is going to connect, it's going to connect right here.
Paul, you will, you will own the house, but you don't live there, right?
Correct, yeah, I own the house, yeah.
And the gate will be big enough to bring the lawnmower, drive the lawnmower through and whatever?
From, yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to, I wanted to do. Well, I mean, the embankment, we have to leave, well, that's really inside the embankment, the town right away. Because there was a tree there that was in the town right away. I took the tree down because all the leaves were rotted and destroyed, so I took that down myself.
Paul, one more time, I might have been going through this, can you just tell us the reason why you wanted to do that?
Well, I mean, for one, I, I'd like to put back the fence just to give it some, um, I don't know, say seclusion in the backyard. There's no, there's no privacy because your backyard overlooks the road, you know, for one. And for two, um, you know, if you've got kids or anybody has a pet or a dog, you know, it's just pretty much now it's free flowing, so I mean. Well, that's, I had to run it up in the, yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
What's the length of that?
The length of?
That, which you want to put up?
This length here?
Yeah.
Um, it's on there.
Just out of curiosity, have you just?
It's, um, well, six foot, and it's, uh, six lengths, so it's thirty-six feet.
Any other questions of the applicant, at this point?
Well, the, the issue is, isn't the issue that there's two front yards?
Yes.
It's a corner.
Because it's a corner lot again.
Right, no, you know the part that is on Pleasant Street?
Correct.
And, you know, it sort of slows down like that, is any fence is going to go around there?
No, I'm not even going to be close to the embankment.
You're not even going to go to that?
No, 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 this is, this is just, again, just, it's three feet off, off my rock garden that's on the side. And again, it, it closes off too, because now you can see all my air conditioning unit, all the, all the, all the electricals here, all, you know, so, um, so it kind of hides all that also, that's, that's there.
So when you go to, going to go sell it or whatever, or do more things for someone else?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, even, you know, it's just, it'll make it easier to, I mean, I've had a lot of people talk about this, it's why I came here. Because I've had it on the market three, four months, and the biggest thing was, is, you know, the privacy in the backyard. Because inside's all redone, I mean, the house, you know, that day it was, it was pretty nice, so. Thank you, yeah, I, I, all the neighbors love it because it was, it's been a nice sort of ten years. I mean, Joe, and everybody's got complaints on it, cold and everything, so, I mean, we redid the whole thing, and, uh, they're excited about it, and, you know, around the people that live around it. And again, I asked my neighbors before I even did it, and they were happy with it. They said it would be a nice addition if it's done, and so, you know, put the, the money into the fence, it'll be a nice fence, so.
Any more questions of the applicant? Okay, next, we'll have questions from the audience, for or against?
Can I just come up?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Hello, my name is Anthony Palongo, I own the property at seventeen oh seven Sherman Drive. So really, I'm here to kind of understand the aesthetics of your fence, and if it's going to have any detrimental effects on the adjacent property values. So I, I see this here, is that Sherman Drive on the bottom there?
Correct, yes.
This is Sherman, okay, is that seventeen oh one that you're looking at? It's a nice piece of property, very beautiful, and the neighborhood in general is very prestigious. I live at seventeen oh seven, at two point two acres. So I just wanted with the impact of your fence, and the type of fence, it's metal fence, it's stone fence?
No, I was, I was.
Any ideas for enhancement with edges or cushions or?
Um, well, you know, um, no, I didn't, I didn't think of that, I, I just thought of replacing what, what was, what was there. Because again, I don't know if you remember the house?
I know the people there, it was Faustos you were still with there.
Okay, yeah, but after that, I guess it went downhill, and there was, there was a fence that was there, um, that was falling and collapsed, and it's been there for.
So your fence is going to enhance the neighborhood?
Oh, oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, no, I mean, you seen what I did there, I got, yeah, I got siding for three hundred square meters, so. I, I want to make it nice, and I want to make it presentable, I mean, you know, I, I ripped out the driveway, I took care of that, but I owned the driveway, and it was all.
So this fence is metal, is that?
No, 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 it's, it's vinyl.
It's vinyl?
It's vinyl, it's the same hot fence I put on my house, so. And again, from Sherman Drive, you wouldn't even really be able to see it. And, and it'd probably be nicer from the road, because right now you see all my air conditioning unit, everything out there in the corner.
And you have plenty of shrubs and trees?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know, did you see the shrubs and the rocks and stuff I put in so far?
I spend more time looking at the Sherman Drive side than.
Oh, okay, well, I, I put shrubs, I put small shrubs, I'm not a fan of really big shrubs, um, because again, when they get overgrown, you know, they kind of don't look as nice as, you know, so.
Oh, and I feel differently about that.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Who respects that?
But, uh, but no, I put smaller shrubs, smaller bushes, more maintainable, I put a rock garden in the back. You know, again, I took down the old, I don't know if you remember, it was an old shed.
I don't have, yeah, no, I, I noticed you put some time into it.
Yeah.
You got your heart and soul into it, I'm just looking at the values of the adjacent properties. So as long, as long as it's not offensive, that's fine with me.
Yeah, no, I'll make it nice, I'm going to have like a, a nice ranch gate, you know, for, for the side. Again, I want it to match my house, and, you know, I'm not going to put something on this.
Are you going to occupy the house, is that it, that's yours?
I, no, I'm not going to, I, I wish I would, but my wife really don't want to move, but to be honest with you, it's in better shape than my house, because everything's brand new. So I, I love the house, I mean, I worked on it a year, um, you know, and I, I did have one offer on it, but it, it didn't work out, so, um, you know, pretty much, I got it up for sale, so.
So as long as the fence looks nice, you don't have any problem with it?
No, as long as.
That's what I wrote, detract from the, the benefit of the property.
I'm going to make it match, again, the, the style of the home, you know, so, um, in fact, I'm going to put, um, new, uh, hardware on the garage doors, it's actually going to match the handles on the fences and stuff too, so. Yeah, it'll, it'll look nice when it's done, I'm not going to.
Okay, good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I'm Vince.
Yes, sir. I'm Vincent Rossi. I live at One Bed, Good Line. I do acknowledge that Mr. Ciogni's kind of doing a job, running a base, and he's saying to be a policy proposal in an ice sore. I guess what he's proposing doesn't even make sense because there's supposed to be some sort of practical difficulty that he needs to alleviate, and he hasn't suggested one. The privacy achievement that he achieved just by building a fence in parallel to the side of the house, which is what zoning law intended. And I think it's the most negative development in the neighborhood to have a six-foot-high vinyl fence that you can't see through protruding towards the street. The zoning law says you can't go beyond in front of the house for a reason because you see a lot of houses more so in Utica where people build their fences and they have pools in the front yard, and they don't fence this close to the street, and I think it's unsightly. So, even though I could commend him on his very beautiful job at the house, I don't think he meets the requirement that he needs to explain why he needs to go eight feet closer to the street. That's my only objection.
Okay, you're the answer?
I do, actually. So, you know, I guess I don't have to do anything, which would be fine, too, but looking at this, I like to put up a fence. And also, too, if you have your gate on the side of the house, I think that's going to be more unsightly, and I could do that. But then I'm also going to have this piece of fence sticking out into the road, which is going to be even more unsightly to have that. So, this fence actually takes care of hiding this fence that's currently there, and then also, too, putting a gate on the side, which would be, you know, a nicer look to it when you're looking at the house in the Sherman Drive area. And I don't really see on Pleasant Ave how it really looked bad.
And be able to get in and out of it.
And be able to get in and out of it. Plus, it also, again, covers the air conditioning units and everything that's sitting here on the corner. So, you know, again, I guess it's preference. Everybody has an opinion, but my opinion is if this gate's sticking out and I have my gate on this side, I think that's going to look ungodly. So, I mean, again, I don't, I asked my neighbors that are right next door to me because they're the ones that have to really see the fence, and they're my neighbors. So, if you live three roads, three rows up and you're just driving by and you don't like it, you know, I'd rather have my neighbors next door. And actually, Mr. Bishop next door, this was what they were happy to see. So, I tried to comply more, again, to my neighbors.
What color is the fence going to be?
It's going to be white. It's going to match the corners of my house and the way around my windows.
Well, it's not going to impair anybody's vision either, they'd be able to...
No, it's not. Again, the fence was there before. It's not, if I had to take it down to bring a skid steer in there, the fence would still be there. And it was falling down. I mean, it was all battened, it was a mess, so, again...
Yeah, I was there today, I saw it.
Yeah.
And so, when you get in your backyard, it's a lot safer to go, a lawnmower, than to try and pop over that hill.
Well, plus, if you brought a lawnmower in, you could drive right in from the side. Again, you've seen the money I put into it, the time I put into it. It's not going to look bad when I'm done with it. The finished product, I want it to be quality. I don't want it to be, you know, and again, if I go and, you know, and run the fence along this side and put a gate here, that's, that's going to look ridiculous. It's going to look like a jailhouse, you know what I mean? Then you have a fence hanging off the side because I'm not going to take the back fence.
I think the board understands the issue. There hasn't been any showing of hardship. There hasn't been any showing why you can't achieve privacy by building a fence along the parallel of the house, which is what the zoning ordinance says. Eight feet's a pretty significant deviation from what the statute requires. And I don't understand the argument about the fence. Why, I mean, the gate, the gate, if the gate is on the side of the fence that faces Pleasant Street, how is that any less serviceable offense? The fence is, you know, up in the air six or seven feet, so I don't see how the orientation of the gate may, is as...
I think it just looks ugly. It's ugly. I mean, that's my opinion, it's my house. I paid taxes, and I think it's ugly.
Well, nobody's talking about who's paying the taxes. We're talking about whether or not the board should grant you a variance.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying I think it looks ugly on the side of the house. And, you know, I guess the board's here also to make sure that the beautification of the neighborhood looks the best. I don't know, so...
Okay, Vincent Rossi, I think, I think just because you haven't been to a meeting in a long time, I know you were a town attorney at one time. So, we're glad you're here to state your case.
I appreciate the opportunity to be heard, and I especially like the idea of getting a mailed notice, which is a tremendous idea. And I know it's a burden to your codes office, it's hard to do, but newspaper notice is worthless, and first-class letter was really, I'm very grateful to have the chance to put like two sites up.
Vincent, where is your housing relation to this? I kind of got lost.
It is some distance away. So, the people that Mr. Ciogni's saying that he got, you know, pay from are my neighbors' Donahue here.
On Sherman?
Well, it's set way back, but it's on Sherman. And then Bradford Lane is here, and my house is here.
Oh, okay.
The board is repeatedly both denied and granted side yard fences. Generally, we've asked for there to be some plantings in front of them because we recognize the fact that the yard gets cut off pretty good once they do it, and we don't want it always to be too thick.
Planning would be great, and I don't, I know I don't dictate what he does with his fence, but I think planting would be a wonderful thing, or a fence that was a graded fence rather than a solid, you know, can't see through the fence. I, you know, maybe it's my own little odd feeling, but when you go by a house that's all enclosed with fences that you can't see through, it creates kind of a prison atmosphere, not to be, not to put too far upon it, but anyway, I mean, I'd love it if you made them put some shrubbery along there, but whatever you think, Dust, is going to be okay with me.
Got you. Thank you.
Who is, is there, I did drive by, but is there a home directly across Pleasant?
Yeah, yeah, but the houses over here are lower.
Paul Raymond.
Paul Raymond lives here on the corner. His house is probably ten feet, eight feet below the level of the driveway.
There's a lot of shrubs in his driveway, kind of goes down.
That's right. It's sort of a scary driveway half above. And then there's another stone house here. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, any more questions of the applicant? Any more questions from anybody in the audience? Okay, board, do you want to go through the criteria? Do you have anything?
I just, I am a little bit concerned. And the only reason why, as we had a conversation a couple of months ago about trees and shrubs and what we could do, I think if we put six-foot trees across there, still going to impair the vision that the gentleman had here. He was considering about looking through the fence to block the vision, maybe...
Well, he wanted to block the fence, I think is what he was saying.
Yes.
Make it look a little more aesthetic, confusing rather than the big wall.
It is a statement.
Well, that's where I'm going with this.
We don't usually see those on the corner, so maybe having some shrubs softens it and gives a little bit more curb appeal of similar homes in that neighborhood.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, exactly.
Okay, well, the application before us is a fence, and I guess if the applicant would want to...
I mean, if you guys like my rock, I like the rock. Can I put rock here and small bushes instead of few shrubs that are going to grow?
I think something like that, I think...
I would love that.
I don't have a problem with that.
It breaks up...
You know what, I think...
Yeah, that would break up...
But not just the fence.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
And also, you would, that would bother you?
No, because I like my rock. So, I would take my rock.
I like your rock.
I would stop here my rock. And just another thing, too, I have the gas line that goes, that goes over here, too, in this area. So, that's another thing. If I dig here and put holes, I got gas line that's going through here because I took the oil out of the house and I put a gas line. So, the gas line actually is running up through the side here and over. So, that would be...
Oh, I agree with you there. I don't think that, I just think that if you walk the other way with the...
Yeah, I put rock here. I keep the rock the same here, and then bring it in here, and the only thing would be rock, of course, is where the gate is. And I would put, I would put like three bushes here, with smaller bushes like I have up there, something that, you know, I don't want to put these big monstrosities and then they just kind of...
If I may speak frankly?
Sure.
The whole idea of blocking a wall, whether you have it at that left or the one next to your house or any, by putting something that would grow it as a minimum of three or four feet, every post, maybe every ten feet or every six feet, by doing that, it really, over time, blocks it so you can't see it and it doesn't look like a wall or a prison.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have, I don't have a problem because this actually would look, this would look nice with the rock and the bushes.
And then maybe on every post, like you said, because it is quite concrete.
Are they ten foot?
Can I put them in the middle of my fence? Because where the posts are, I like the middle of the fence.
You want this?
Exactly, because I'm going to buy the ornate tops and stuff, and I, you know...
Yeah.
So, I don't have a problem. Like I said, I asked all my, my actual neighbors, I mean, I asked every neighbor that I had here, and everybody was happy with that. That's why I came, and no one came...
You know, you're talking about value, and I think the rock would make...
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
That would add a little value to it, I think also.
Well, it keeps with the integrity of their, the justified offense, justified offense in that neighborhood.
I agree.
No, I don't have a problem with the rock. I like it.
Then would you do a little bit of character to that?
Yeah.
It's a really nice house.
And character to the fence?
To the whole property, yes, to the fence. I think it would make the fence blend in better than a...
So, the applicant is saying that he would do that, so now you've got something different that's...
So, when we make a motion...
When we make a motion, we have to add that part of the motion.
That we accept it as long as there is...
Well, you're going to impose conditions, so it's going to be a motion to grant the variance subject to the following conditions, which have been consented to by the applicant, which is, one, he's going to put stone adjacent to the new fence, and, two, that he is going to place shrubs approximately three feet in height spaced halfway between each post of the new fence.
I don't know if we need to get into limitation of footage there. I would have the trust that the applicant...
That's why I said approximately three.
Well, I said approximately because you don't want to have something like a little like this.
Because I might be up there with tape measure, seeing...
Well, I want to keep the same measurement as the rocks that I currently have that go all around my house because then it'll look uniform. You know what I mean? I don't want to make it like this and the ones like that, you know, I don't want it, I want it to keep it uniform. So, when you look at the house, you look at the whole, you know, and just you have a good look.
The floors.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We like the floor. I think...
The floor, yes.
Okay, anybody in the audience want to comment on that? Mr. Palomo, you think the rocks will look good with some trees between us?
No, I think Lenora made a good point, but what I try to emphasize is maintain the value. This property up on Sherman is exquisite property, it's pristine, so...
I agree.
The aesthetics are critical, and then you set a precedence for future people.
Right.
So, whatever pathway you pursue, somebody else is going to do the same thing. So, fences can be offensive, but intended. But if you're picking the trees, you put the trees, and you put the bushes, and I think the, you know, the bush, bushes, and you could design it, you can, you can put in a lot of nice things in there and without getting into detail. But again, the thing is, we don't want to, you know, subtract and deteriorate and change the aesthetics and the, and the property values, that's all.
No, listen, I agree.
So, long you can sensitize with us that bitter, put so much time and effort into it, then I think we're on the same page.
I think that's a great point because it's going to be one of our questions. It's going to change the aesthetics, and I think by adding value to it, it's going to give a basis of what his motion is.
Exactly, so he sounds like he's on the same page.
No, I want it to look nice. I don't want it to look, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm all about making it look nice.
He's trying to sell it. It doesn't look nice, he's not going to sell it.
All right, let's go through the criteria.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay.
You love it.
No, anybody?
No, that's cameraman.
Okay, all right. Does anybody want to go through the criteria? We will go through the criteria with the amended rocks and shrubs. Okay, an undesirable, okay, glasses, another, an undesirable change to the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood. Possibly. No, possibly. Terry, questionable.